Well, this meeting on the Federal Planting Commission to order at six thirty-three. Roco.
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Commissioner Harvey. Not present. Commissioner Abad. Not present. Vice Chairperson Mendoza. Present. Chairperson Camarnas.
Present.
All right, a stand. Pledge of Allegiance. Reuben, you don't mind?
Yep.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See you then. Public appearances. B one, matter's not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to, if you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Do we have anybody here tonight that wishes to bring up something that is not currently on the agenda? Go get your hands if you do. All right. Doesn't look like we have anybody. B two, matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any items within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. At that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a limit. A time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. I'm going to guess we have some people here for the agenda items tonight. Who do we have? So three, all right. You'll get your chance. Sorry. Uh consent calendar, C one. Approving the planning commission, uh, meeting minutes for March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Everybody gotten the, uh, got their minutes and got a chance to review them?
Yes.
Did notice we had some. Grammar issues. And a misspelling of one of the commissioners' names. So I think, uh, I don't think any of that will affect approving the minutes, but I think they need to be re- rechecked and cleaned.
Yes, Miss, or we'll get that squared away.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, or approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
It's removed and seconded to approve the consent calendar, all those in favor? We're voting with the hand voting? Or the machine?
There it goes.
There it is.
There we go, motion passes three zero.
All right. Planning Commission, new business discussion action recommended or deny? D one, subject. Public hearing discussion action conditional use permit, C U P twenty-two dash zero four. To allow for the construction of an accessory structure exceeding the allowed height limit at the following address. Two five three Puerto Escondido, Imperial California, nine two two five one. A P N number zero four four dash six nine seven dash zero four eight. I'm gonna open public hearing at this time. On this item. So we have a staff report on. This.
Yes, good evening commissioners. Um, the item before you is a conditional use permit for Mr. Guadalupe Cárdenas. As you stated, located at two fifty-three West Puerto Escondido Drive. Um, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow an eighteen-foot pre-manufactured accessory storage structure within a residential zone. The submitted plans detail an eighteen-foot structure used for storage and to accommodate his recreational vehicle. Eighteen-foot structures height deviates from the twelve-foot maximum allowable height within a residential zone and therefore requires a conditional use permit. The public hearing scheduled for today, July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two was duly noticed in the Holtville Tribune and Callexico Chronicle on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, with notices mailed out to property owners within three hundred feet of the proposed project as well. This project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Uh, the applicant is here, if you have any questions for him?
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I actually have a question for staff. Um, I know it was noticed in the paper where, and it says that the property owners were notified were, do those notices go directly to the property owner or does it go to the residences in the area?
To the property owner.
So there could potentially be a tenant that wasn't notified.
That would be the responsibility of the property owner to relay that information to the resident.
Oh, looking at the photograph. Of the property. So the property owners that would be, need to be notified would be one on either side of the property in question?
Within three hundred feet of the property, of the parcel.
And then obviously some of the properties on the other side of the fence line?
Correct.
So we're looking at. Six, six to eight properties that need to be notified?
No, there was more than that.
More than that?
Oh, yes. It's within three hundred feet.
Where on the property is it going to be placed?
It's, um, on the picture, it's to the left of the property.
In the backyard or in the front?
In the side yard.
But it behind the fence, so it's not, so the people next door aren't gonna have this thing they're looking at when they're in their front yard? Cause there's a fence and then there's the property in the back and then it looks like there's like a little side driveway in the front. It's not gonna be in the front. Near the street, it's gonna actually be in the backyard.
Within, um, the fence, fence area.
You, you, you will note though, that chances are the fence is like in the neighborhood of six feet and the proposed structure is eighteen, so.
I do realize that, my, my concern was if it's gonna be, cause like I said, there's like that dirt driveway right there that kinda comes towards the street and that they were gonna be building this huge structure right there. Their neighbors next door, when they're standing in their front yard, all they're gonna see is that huge structure.
The plans detail thirty feet from the property line with the sidewalk. So it's thirty feet into the property.
From the front?
Yes.
And then. What is it, three foot, five foot offset from the fence? Three feet from the fence line, right? On the sides, that's the.
The new, yes.
That's.
That's the new setback is three feet, right?
Correct.
However, he has a five foot setback.
But I believe the applicant is here if you want clarity about on that issue. I, I, my understanding from staff is that it's gonna be on the backyard side of the fence, but if you want clarity with respect to that, I'm sure they would be happy to clarify.
Did I get that? The reason I'm asking is like I said, as a neighbor, if I had someone building an eighteen-foot structure, right, when I walk out my house, all I would see for the rest of eternity is this huge structure. I don't want, I'd be okay with it in the backyard, but in looking at this picture, it looks like you have a, what looks like a pretty nice little water fountain or boss, uh, thing over here in the corner and then you have trees. I just wanna make sure that that structure is gonna be in the backyard portion of it.
The structure will pretty much run parallel to my neighbor's garage. Um, according, according to the, uh, planning commission when they, I mean, the inspector, when I asked, they asked that I could go thirty-five feet, I believe, which is pretty much where the, uh, my neighbor's garage starts at. However, I wish to put it maybe about a foot back from that area because I, I personally don't want my neighbor to come out and I, I can't even say, be able to say hi to him. You know, so I don't, I don't want it to obstruct his view and I don't want it to obstruct my view either. So it would, it would have a, a maybe about a foot setback from his garage area where it starts. And it parallels to the corner of my house due to, due to the fact that we're in the, at the beginning of the cul-de-sac. In that area, so it'd be from there on and it'd be pretty much about the same length and almost the same height at what his garage is, which what you see in the picture of the, uh, if you look at the overhead. It's the same, it's about the same distance, same length, same length, same height. Well, the, the fence that we see in the picture, that's gonna stay where it is, pretty much? Uh, the fence to the front? Your front fence, yes.
That divides the front yard and the backyard?
Hmm, partial, only a portion of it. Only a portion, the gar, the garage itself will be the fence and then what every portion I have left is gonna stay on the front. So, uh. Cause as I understand Commissioner Mendoza's question was, will, will the structure be located, I guess, at south of your fence? Within your back, what is currently your backyard? So some of it will extend. Some of it will extend, yes. How, how much of it will extend northward of your fence? All right, looking at about ten feet forward.
About how far forward your neighbor's garage is from the fence?
Uh, my neighbor's garage is that much forward, yeah, no, actually, he's about twenty feet. Fifteen, fifteen feet from my fence.
North.
Correct.
Towards the cul-de-sac.
Yes, yeah.
And we didn't read any notices, right? No phone calls, no letters, no nothing from any of the neighbors? Nothing.
With this being, it looks like it's gonna have to be a second driveway to be able to put that trailer in there. They buy, are we in compliance with like the approaches and the?
Um, he hasn't applied for one, but if, um, it all depends, once we see the plans, we take a look at what's, what's around it.
Cause it looks like there isn't an approach now, so.
It could be a driveway extension, it could be a new driveway, but we would have to take a look at that, uh, what's being proposed so we can, um, review in, in maybe. Quick comment by way of notice. Um, my, my understanding is that the, the notice that's required in this situation is publication in a new, in the newspaper, which the staff refer to, and also mail. Now, the, the code, the state law, as I recall, specifies that that mail is sent to the, uh, last uh, owner as shown on the assessment rules. So I, you're right, you're right, it could go to an owner who doesn't live there, but that's what the law requires.
Other questions for, um, the applicant or staff? Nope, all right, I'm gonna close public hearing on this. And open up commissioner discussion. Thank you, sorry. All right, guys. What do we have? Wanna see that again or? Pass it back, please? So based on the staff, staff was having a reading, the staff doesn't seem to have a problem with, it's a recommendation to approve it.
That is correct.
I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with it, I under, I mean, I used to be a trailer owner, I can understand you wanting to cover it up in our, in our heat, you're, I'm sure your trailer's out there being destroyed. The, the only reason I'm asking so many questions is the concern I have is once this is built, it's permanent. And I'm wanting to make sure that your neighbor either knows, very well aware or knows that this potentially is gonna block their view for, forever. And I'm not sure, I'm trying to figure out the way that this is oriented. It may mean they're no longer getting sun in their house and they're forever in a shadow. And so, do you, are you in communication with your neighbor that they're aware that this is what you're planning to do or?
Yeah, you can come back up here. Thank you for helping.
I mean, obviously they were given the opportunity to come to.
Yes, and I, and I did ask both, on both sides and, uh, uh, they both did not have any opposition whatsoever. And as a matter of fact, one of them even asked, asked me if he were, if I wanted him to attend today. And it was all, I told him, it's up to you, it's up to you if you wish to attend, cause he, he doesn't have no opposition to, to it whatsoever. And I did explain to him on what it is, especially the one where it's gonna be adjacent to. That particular one, uh, because it doesn't overshadow, cause it doesn't extend over his garage and, and either forward or back, cause it's about the same length of, as his garage, how it extends towards his backyard. But, uh, there'd be no shadow cast on him whatsoever. To a certain degree. There's no windows in his garage.
The second floor doesn't have any, uh, windows on that side?
Pardon me?
Does the second floor have any windows on that side then? Look out.
Uh, at the top, yes, there's one window.
But he can, he's, he's cool with it.
Yeah, he's fine with it.
Any other questions?
Um, for toys, I mean, there's no hazardous materials or anything like that, just, I mean, just for regular garages?
Yes, just regular garages, uh, well, plus my tools, plus my tools, I have plethora of tools. Um, but it'd be for an RV and for my truck, cause my truck doesn't fit in the garage. In the, in, in the existing garage. It's about four inches too tall. And about three feet too long.
They're bigger than garages used to be.
No, they're not.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you again for helping us with, uh, discussion on that. All right, well. With that, I need a motion to, uh, approve or deny. Motion's been, uh, made and seconded to approve, um, subject, uh, D one. C U P twenty-two dash zero four. A P N number zero four four dash six nine seven dash zero four eight. All those in favor signify by voting. Did you clear from the last night we go?
There we go, motion passes three zero.
You're good to go, sir.
Thank you for coming in and.
Yeah, I appreciate your time.
Hey, um, Mr. Chair, I think there is a provision in the, in the ordinance which provides an appeal period. So someone, someone.
Hold on, sir. Hold on a second.
There is provision in our ordinance where someone could appeal the decision of the planning commission. Not likely, given the fact that nobody appeared this evening, but, but, uh, when, when you go and ask staff, let's say tomorrow, where's my permit? They're, they're gonna say to you, they gotta wait ten days to allow someone to appeal. And if that were to happen, it would go to the city council. So, just a heads up about that. Thank you.
All right, let's try the next one. D two, subject, public hearing discussion action conditional use permit, C U P twenty-two dash zero three. To allow the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages and onsite live entertainment in the existing restaurant within the neighborhood commercial zone located at two nine seven South Imperial Avenue, A P N number zero six four dash one zero three dash zero zero five. I'm going to open. Open public hearing at this time on that and we'll start with the staff report.
The applicant for conditional, um, use permit twenty-two three is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages and onsite live entertainment. Um, per California Alcoholic Beverage Control Department, the type of alcohol license being applied for is a type forty-one. The restaurant will be closed for the summer months, but during this time, Mr. Hughes is working on site improvements with grant monies he received. And Salt Cedar Barbecue will reopen in the fall with expanded hours of Thursday through Saturday, ten AM to ten PM. Um, the public hearing scheduled for today was duly noticed in the Holtville Tribune and Callexico Chronicle on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, with notices alerting property owners within three hundred feet of the pro, proposed project as well. And the, uh, applicant is here as well, if you have any questions, he actually has, um, photos, uh, to detail his plans.
If you want, you can take off your mask if you're not comfortable, that's fine.
Uh, I have a little congestion, so it's.
Oh, no, that's fine, I just was saying if you, you wish, entirely up to you.
I'd rather, rather keep us all good, thank you. Of course, my printer runs out of ink, but I got it right here. Hello, my name is Daniel Hughes, I H S class of two thousand. Nice to meet you all. I'm the owner, proprietor and pit master at Salt Cedar Barbecue. We have been open locally since March of this year. We strive to uphold high standards in the quality of our product and feedback from the community has been positive thus far. We are currently closed for the summer, we will reopen mid-October with an updated outdoor patio. This will include a decomposed granite hardscape, a covered dining slash bar area, a dedicated area for family-friendly games and a multi-use stage to promote community events and gatherings. Acquiring an A B C license will help us move forward with current expansion plans. I was told I had some concerns for the neighbors, so I'd like to address those concerns this time as well. Parking. The south gate located on Sixth Street will be used as an emergency exit during business hours. Privacy blinds will be installed on this portion of fencing as well. See photo? That's that one there. Side gate on Sixth Street, Sixth and Imperial Avenue. This should deter loitering and allow the public to assume primary parking in his own Imperial Avenue, which has ample parking. Again, see photos. That's the neighbor's parking lot. Also has parking. Noise. The new stage area will be constructed on the north side of the building. This should direct noise away from surrounding residences, see photo. A sound engineer will be on hand during any amplified performance, insurances, ensuring sound levels are within reason and comply with local law. No music will be played after ten PM per C U P conditions. Additionally, amplified music will take place Friday or Saturday only. Thank you and I look forward to growing my business within our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You'll get some, don't go anywhere. Um, I have a question for staff though, real quick. Um, I thought our music shut down at nine. Cause we always turn the band off at the street fair at nine and I was told it's nine because that was ordinance. So it's actually ten?
We don't have currently a, a noise ordinance.
Hey, I know it references the noise element, is it?
We have the noise element.
Okay, but we always turn the band off at street fair at nine. You know, there are things we do on the street. Market days, that kind of stuff, it's a street fair, I mean.
Sir, does our noise element have a time?
Not very specific, um, for live entertainment, entertainment, you have the, the, we have the element um, that states the, uh, noise levels and, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
It's very specific on construction noise, but not on live.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll come back. Let me know when you're ready, um. Did we not? Um. Do a very similar C, C U P for the same property a year ago for a different owner? Cause I'm assuming you bought this from somebody else?
I am renting, but there was someone, uh, the year prior that was going to open a, uh.
Distillery.
A, a, a bar, I believe, I don't know what other plans they had. I'm not affiliated with them.
Yeah, well, that's okay, but I mean, we went, we mean, we did the exact same thing for that.
We did, but I believe their entertainment was like acoustic, very low, it wasn't like an amplified stage production type thing, it was.
I thought they left them some wiggle room for that. I thought they left them some wiggle room for that. Yeah, well, actually, where I'm going with this is. No one opposed that, or complained about parking or anything else, and they were gonna have food and. Distilled liquor and all these other things, so um. Not that this is you, I'm just saying, didn't we just do this and?
Excuse me, yes, um, the. A lot of staff referenced Chris Mars. Uh, it was a brewery that was applied for. However, I don't believe it never came to fruition.
Right, right, but I did, but the, this is all eerily similar to that very one we did. Except with, except for this opposition letter.
I I my understanding is that Mi- Mr. Mars uh received this a conditional use permit for that use. Our ordinance requires that it that it actually be used or will expire after a certain period of time. So although that permit was approved, uh, uh, it's no longer a viable permit.
Right, because he never even opened his business, so it.
Because condition to use permits run with the land, right? So if that was still, if that was still. A viable permit, then we might not be here.
Right, well, I was aware exactly where I'm going with this, but I'll stop and come back to that.
But it's similar conditions, you are correct.
Was he gonna be um have a liquor license for hard alcohol though, or was it strictly beer and wine?
You know, I have to know, he had.
He was hard, he had, he was gonna have hard alcohol, because he was gonna distill whiskey. I remember being, it wasn't just a brewery, it was gonna have a distillery. Because that was the big difference, if I remember correctly. But you're not doing, obviously, so you're not, you're you're just. Your beer and wine, that's it, okay.
So that's what your ABC application is for, is for beer and wine?
And I have no plans to drink liquor into what element that brings.
In my head, I'm just trying to think about those the residents, if I were a resident surrounding area, what's what my concerns.
Brought up that the parking might be an issue, um. Uh, if you are, you're you're obviously as a barbecue place, and I see that you had a. Barbecue outside, is there? Where you're setting it up, is there smoke that's going into those apartments? If you're gonna be now, I mean, right now, you're cooking one night a week. But now we're talking these people being subjected to the smoke three nights a week. Have you experienced where there?
And with the wind, you know, the way our wind blows, you know, like, even when I'm burning a clean fire, which is what I'm always trying to do. You know, a fire, that's not, that's what makes my energy turn out well, is when I get a nice clean burning fire that isn't putting off a lot of smoke. Even with that, yes, some smells are gonna get blown around, I I can't say they won't. As far as them getting smoked out, that I don't see that ever happening, because my style of cooking, I'm not just burning fires, it's the smoke everywhere, you know, methodical and. You know, they they may burn for a little while, but when they're cooking, it's it's just clean field, you know? But I couldn't really see the smoke being a problem.
From ten to ten, how long, how much of that time are you actually doing the cooking? Where there's smoke or smells or whatever.
But I think what I'm gonna do is do um. Beef or the full Texas barbecue on Saturdays. And on ten, so I'll have brisket and beef ribs, the the very expensive items with the with the smaller margins. Only on Saturdays, so have that a big day where you can get everyone to come out and sell out. And on Thursdays and Fridays, have have a lunch. And then maybe just chicken and ribs for that night. So during those days, I would actually be. Cooking the day before to prep the sandwiches, and then cooking during the day uh for four or five hours uh for the for the ribs. When I do the overnight cook for the brisket and beef ribs, I'm cooking for a total of twelve to fourteen hours. So I usually start at five at night and finish around five, six in the morning. So they they are long cooks. At least once a week is.
All night?
Yeah, I have a uh.
That's hardcore.
I have a nice uh warming or a holding cabinet that keeps everything right at one forty, one forty-three degrees, so I can get some sleep in between cooking it and serving it.
As far as record, staff hasn't received any complaints from 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 that business.
Read the, are we gonna read the letter? Do we have a comment letter? Yes, um, the staff will. In just a second. Um, I was trying to remember if in the conditional use permit, does it have a certain noise level that he'll be permitted to? So that we don't need to worry about those residents next door having to try to go to sleep with the band playing or something?
I'm sorry.
Is there, well, does the CUP have like a a?
Their specific, no, we 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 reference the noise element, uh, um, and we go by those.
I have to stop just for a second. It has been advised advised of a potential problem we have. Apparently, he has a.
I I see from condition. Number three, it references the noise element, that the applicant is required to meet all uh. Requirements outlined in the noise element. I think what the commission's asking, what what are those requirements? There is there a decibel level?
There there's decibel levels, correct. Um, we don't have it specific here, uh, we can pull that information, so.
Is the decibel level because it's in, the type of zoning the business is in would fall on that decibel? But they've got residences right across the street, is there a different decibel level for residential area?
Different levels, yes. So whatever you receive from the from from that type of business, you have some limitations, so you're in different zones. And you're not allowed to exceed those levels.
So it being in, he wouldn't be allowed to exceed the the level of where he's at.
That is correct.
Not with what the residence is.
All right, at this time, I'm going to close public hearing.
We've got a few more items on this one, but before we do that, um, if you want to explain what the, we just realized that he, there's a potential conflict, you'd like to put it on the record. And um, go ahead, explain.
Yeah, um, I'm looking at the address here, um, and I looked it on the map, the the actual property owner. Uh, that he's a tenant to is um is actually a cousin of mine.
The owner of this property?
Of this property, yeah. So he's he's just the tenant right now for this for this building. Uh, but the actual physical. Location, the entire lot, is actually a cousin of mine.
So you you don't have an ownership interest in it, and you don't have any financial connection with your cousin? Your cousin's an adult, I I gather, and so you don't support your cousin in any way, and he doesn't support you financially? Okay, and you, do you own property in it within the vicinity of this property? I I I don't think the fe- I don't think the fact that a cousin. Has a financial interest in the property means that you have a financial interest, unless there's some connection there. If you were, obviously, if you were part owner of the property, or even if you weren't a part owner of the property. If you had a fin- if you supported him or he supported you, those might be the kinds of factors that might impact. Whether or not you you uh you have a conflict. I don't hear anything that says to me that you have a conflict. Then there's there's obviously the common law where you where you say, you know what? Because my cousin is the owner, I don't believe I can be fair about this matter. Obviously, because it is a public hearing and adjudicatory in nature, if you feel like you can't be fair. To all of the various concerns that you're gonna hear from, then obviously we would need to talk about that. But I don't think you have a political reformat con- uh, conflict. And and I will say this, I I'm not, I'm I'm not your lawyer, and in fact, I'm not a lawyer at all at this point. And so I, that you, that what I'm saying should not be taken as legal advice.
I understand it.
Always gotta be a disclaimer at the end, huh?
Well, and and we discussed that, the other option, that if he does feel that it will appear, what Dennis, we we came to the same conclusion when we were talking. That there is not a legal conflict in the sense that the financials, um, and the common interest is that concept of. Will, will it impact you that 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 you're related to him, and and it's a little wishy-washy, um. But the option, in my opinion, would be if he does choose to avoid this, that we would continue this. Public hearing to the next specific meeting, and you know, he he could step out and not vote.
Right, but right now, if he abstains, everything we did is. We have to push it again anyway to the next.
Correct.
If you, if if you disqualify yourself.
We're done.
For, then then you don't have a, then you're not counted for quorum purposes.
Right, which means we are there, they continuing to discuss the subject would be.
Correct, I would recommend if he is gonna step down, and that's why we're interrupting before, yeah, so, um, I. Also, the other side of the legal issue is that, um, if there are going to be upset neighbors, it is safer to step away when you have a relative that owns the property. So, um, that's part of the consideration. Could we ask the owner if pushing this to the next meeting would be an acceptable process? For him to help make this decision?
We're ready for October, but you know, if we don't have a choice, we don't have a choice, I I can be changed, you know, I get it, you know? That could be two weeks, yeah, things happen, I mean, I get it, you know, something will happen in the future, you know what I mean, like, I get it. And if it's two weeks, I mean, two weeks isn't gonna change my plans that much. Not necessarily, I mean, you'll be on the agenda in two weeks, and there's something else, we'll finish you up, so.
And because we're just continuing at two days specific, we don't pre-notice, we don't go to that pause again, we we post a notice.
And we're not halfway there already.
Yeah, pink, that's closed, it's continued.
Okay, so.
Correct.
It's still open, it's just.
So it's up if you wanna um make a decision now, sorry.
Yeah, just with the with with the one. Letter that I have here for for the property owner across the way, um. Uh, that's not in favor with with the letter that they sent, I'm gonna go ahead and. And allow the other, the decision ultimately come down to to the other, to the other members on the next meeting.
And I and I will say this with respect to that letter, that letter has not been read into the record. And so I would say the first order of business or among the first order of business at the next, at the adjourned public hearing. Should be making sure that letter is read uh into the re- the records.
Have a question, he closed the public hearing, does he need to reopen it in order to continue it?
Yes.
Yes. But if we reopen, but. If we're not gonna discuss anything anymore.
Yeah, but just reo- just say I'll reopen the public hearing, and then we'll continue it to the next, yeah.
Right, okay, I'm reopening the public here on the subject at this time.
And then, um, because there's a conflict of interest, you will be stepping out of the room. Um, but the reality is you don't have to step out because that, we don't have a quorum, so the meeting will be over, we'll adjourn the the meeting due to lack of quorum.
Or adjourn the meeting or just stop on this subject, because we still have commissioner reports and staff reports and or.
Yeah, because you'll be back on that one, sorry. So yes, I apologize, and that's just this item, yeah, this one's over, no quorum.
Okay. So. But I have to close the public hearing now to be able to.
And I need you to read the exact time and date. That we've closed the. No, that this will be continued to on the record. So for the record, um, this matter, item D two, the public hearing. For permit CUP twenty-two dash three will be continued until the next meeting. Of the planning commission on June twenty. July twenty-second at six thirty PM. Twenty, correction, July twenty-seventh at six thirty PM.
Sorry about that. Well. Okay, so anyway, so we're. Closed on that. And make sure this letter gets. Stop talking, Mark. Okay, so, any commissioners have anything to report?
So now into the summer, we're into our dark, our dark period, um. Can we finish the uh the water over here? I need to check the the water park, is it open water again?
Yeah, the water park's working. Vice Chair, do you have anything? I have a question. What are we building on uh P and twelfth? There's a structure going up there behind the old concrete or what's left of the ice plant.
That's Josh Quintetos' property.
P.
P.
P, oh, I'm sorry, I was.
Well, twelfth and P B?
It it is the warehouse, it is an office and warehouse for uh one of our developers, local developers.
Okay, I just hadn't heard anything, I was curious.
They're getting kicked around over there by the.
I do have a question, what's what's the status of the apartment complexes that we're gonna be going in along the brewery um north of Twelfth Street?
Um, they're looking for funding um to the state, so uh still on hold, but it's moving forward, it's it's a, there's some. NOFA under HCD, so they're.
An ASIC, right?
Yes, I I G M H P, you name it. So hopefully, hopefully, we get it soon.
All right, I've done enough damage today. With that, I will, is there anything else from staff? Staff report, nothing? Right, because I think I asked for that, maybe not, anyway.
Under the circumstance, my su- suggestion would be that where you, uh, on the on the. Second public hearing where you didn't have a quorum, that that you you do take a specific action. To uh. Adjourn this meeting, and I think you as chair can do that, because you don't have a quorum for a motion and a second and.
Right.
But I think the right, the point is, the record should be clear that the public hearing was continued to the date mentioned by uh Jillian. And and that the meeting for Brown Act purposes was adjourned to that date in time.
Okay, in addition to her saying it, you want me to say it?
Well, I just want, I just want the record to be clear, it it's, and I, so you could just say the meeting's adjourned as opposed to. I mean, adjourned to a speci- to the date mentioned. I would just suggest you say that.
All right. Yeah, that's confusing to me, because it's just like we're closing an item, that's not necessarily closing the meeting, but I get what you're saying. So. For the record. CUP twenty-two dash zero three, APN zero s- zero six four dash one zero three dash zero zero three. Property located at two nine seven South Imperial Avenue. Due to a. Non-quorum ability to be able to vote, we are going to continue that. Meeting to July twenty-seventh. At six thirty. Good enough? At this time, I'm going to adjourn the uh. Imperial Planning Commission's meeting, uh, seven seventeen.